It's not with Amazon, it's with the...
Kits, yeah.
It's a laptop.
Can speak to you?
No, it's $189. Well, if we all chip in there by tomorrow.
Five of that.
We got turned around by tomorrow. So I don't know, I gotta... You know, we'll see, whatever, think about it. If you want, that's five if you want to.
Need some sidewalks, huh?
Yeah.
All right. Well, wait a minute. I feel like I'm sitting in a hole. There we go. Okay. Mr. President Pro Tem, you want me to...
You can start.
Get started? Very good. I'd like to call the Streets and Sidewalks and Utilities Committee to order. We have a few... We have one... We have two things. We have an update on the city's 2018 capital project. Mr. Ruler?
Yeah, this is our annual event. I mean, it's become an event because it's a good time for us as we close out the year to refresh you with all the various projects, big and small, that your capital monies go to. And that's pertinent also because we're going to talk about the capital plan for next year. But first, we found that you seem to enjoy this part better than the actual cap plan review and the numbers and statistics. But Jim's got... Looks like he's got some imagery. He's got a lot of information. And he swears it's going to be less than an hour. So I'll just... I'll stop and let Jim take it.
Sure. I would suggest to sit out so you could see the imagery because the imagery is more important than me talking. So, like Dave said, of the lights. Tom, thank you. Staff's done a lot of good work this year. We've had a lot of projects go through construction. And I'm going to attempt to keep this short, but when they've done such a good job, it's hard to cut it off. So we're going to... I'm going to stick to the key points and questions that we get asked because we're figuring if we're getting asked these questions, that you guys are getting asked these as well. So, going right to it, starting with a project down in the south end, Cedar Street. This is part of a long-term venture, working with CBG and Community Development to try to improve the south end's infrastructure. So we did Pine Street already. This year, we did improvements to Cedar Street where we added new... Basically, we took out an older chip-sealed street and we put in a new asphalt street with curves and storm sewers instead of ditches. We added sidewalks where there weren't any sidewalks. We replaced the water line, which was very old and breaks. And actually, what drove the project was the sanitary sewer, which actually had failures in the sewer. So that led us to doing this one next. The project cost was about $1 million and with about 45% of that being funded by CBG. Some of the issues that came up with it... Whenever we do work on water lines that are old, every time we go to turn it off, the valve breaks. When the valve breaks, we've got to go farther out to fix it. And then the residents get frustrated because it's like, "You told me you're going to shut the water off today. We tried, we couldn't get it off." So then we had to shift it to a different day. And I appreciate everyone out here, everybody out there who lives out there who went through that struggle with us as we fixed it. So now that's fixed. The other thing we do is when we add sidewalks in an area that there's not, you know, we try not to do it just this standard, okay, it's going to be this wide, this far out. We try to mesh it in with the people's front yards. So we change the sidewalk location in different areas that are imperceptible to others, but those who live there, they see it and they appreciate it. So, yes?
Is this project completely paid for or do the residents have to be assessed?
The residents are not assessed for this project.
Okay, so it's projects like this with CBG are completely paid for?
Correct. Actually, if you give it to me, I'll pass it. Don't do that. That's right. That's enough. So, go with something that has an improvement to an area to something that's a little more practical and necessary. We had some emergency... I'll call them emergency sanitary repairs down along the river. So in case... For most of you who don't know, a third of the city's sanitary flows...
Just switch microphones. I don't...
Yes, I did. Thank you. A third of the city's sanitary flows through a sewer that's located next to the Kiger River, adjacent to the CSX railroad tracks, which is then adjacent to a retaining wall to the ABC railroad tracks, which makes it extremely difficult to get to. And these sewers... We don't get to them too often, but if you can see in some of the pictures, what we found when we went and looked at the sewers, this is a support for that sanitary sewer. You can see it's not supporting much of anything. The river had eroded away the foundation underneath that support, which is supposed to look like this one. So this piece of pipe was not being supported by anything. And that was typical throughout a length in that area... A length of sewers in that area. Also, you can see, most of the time sanitary sewers aren't sitting above ground, okay? But this... In this case, the sanitary sewer goes from being exposed to being buried. And in that area, there was a little bit of vegetation growing out of the sewer. So, not really a good thing. And as soon as we saw it, we started the process to try to get it fixed. While the construction cost wasn't too much at $210,000 and it only took six weeks to do, it took us six months to get the approvals from the railroad to get down to the river to get it fixed, okay? And it cost us $180,000 for flaggers pumping the sewage around, of review fees from the railroad and permits and stuff like that. So... Because part of that sewer runs into and out of the railroad's property. So, we're now looking at... We're studying, is there a way to remove that sewer from that area so that we don't have that problem again in the future? So, needless to say, it's there for a reason. I mean, sanitary sewers flow by gravity. That's the lowest elevation. It goes towards the plant, which is adjacent to the river, like it is in every other community. So it is going to be a challenge for us moving forward in the future. Next job we're talking about is a water main replacement. You don't see too many water main replacements in the past, but you're going to see more of those in the future because our system's aging, okay? Our distribution system's 53 years old right now. The lifespan... The design life is 50 years for a water main, but we can see them, you know, functioning well over 100. We have many water lines that are older than 1924. So they're already pushing 100 years. And again, as in this case here, these areas at Garspalding Suzanne, this is on the west end of town, just north of Main Street, there were 20 breaks in 22 years in this stretch of sewer. And this is only 2/3 of a mile. So we were getting... Those people who live out there would be calling us up on a regular basis. And after a while, they're just going frustrated, "Can you just come fix this?" And we agree, to the tune of about $940,000 to fix 2/3 of a mile of water main, it's not a simple venture. So, we were able to do that. And I think some of you might remember that during that time, Jack, it took a little while to get the last bit of pavement done. And that was frustrating for those people who lived in that area, but we were able to get that finished and through there. So...
Yeah. Jim, to the best of your knowledge, is there any of the real old lead water lines in existence in Kent?
No. Not in the main lines, no.
Okay. Not in the main line, but there could be in the laterals?
There was a connection from old galvanized lines to copper services. And that was a lead piece. So, but we... First off, I should say that the water that gets put out of the... From the city's plant is scale building. It actually puts a film on the inside of the water lines. And it's tested to make sure that it doesn't take and corrode away from any material that's out there. Secondly, those... Those goose neck services is what they're called. Those, before we go through and do projects, we're taking those out and replacing those with non-lead services.
Now, I don't... And Jim, the average person hears 2/3 of a mile, did you say?
Yes.
$940,000.
Yes.
I mean, about a million bucks.
Yes.
All right. Of that money, how much of that is materials, would you say percentage-wise? And how much is actual labor? Because I don't think people realize how expensive labor is.
Typically, it's around 50/50. 50% is in the material costs, 50% is in the labor costs. And that's just in the contractor's fees. We also hire outside inspectors to come inspect these projects that's being built, which is about 10% of that cost, which is all labor costs. And we hire outside inspectors because our staff is committed already to the street and sidewalk program and Summit Street and other areas. So there's... We can't staff all the construction that we do.
So it's about 50/50?
It's about 50/50.
After 10% is taken off the copper inspection?
Correct. Mm-hmm. And not all of that labor is actually done in Kent. A lot of it's in their home office, you know, that runs the jobs that way and does their paperwork and stuff like that. So...
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Moving on to some traffic-related work, the State Route 43 traffic improvements. Or like we've been hearing, it's the sidewalk improvements because that's what people see right now, is that the sidewalk is being replaced. So they believe that's all of the work that's being done. The project actually consists of replacing three traffic signals. The one at School Street, Cherry and Bowman, and then at the Marx Drive at Burl. Those signals will be replaced and upgraded. Right now, the signal out there is a timer. It goes tick, 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 tick. So it's a little bit old and outdated. So we can't coordinate those signals. So when you drive into town coming from the south, you can hit the light green at 261 and then stop 600 feet away at Burl and cause backups. So we can't fix that without having more advanced equipment out there, which this was... Would build. And then we're connecting it to our central control system that is in the office next to mine, where that... Those three signals plus three additional ones will be tied in so that we can monitor and change and manage the timings out there to best allow traffic to flow through. This is the same system that we have on 59, going from Middlebury to Horning. Now we have it on Summit Street as well. And so now we have it on 43. So we'll have... We have about 60% of our signals on this system so that we can manage them. The other thing that... A couple of things that's done as part of this project, we're adding a second turn lane, left turn lane on 261, westbound to southbound on 43. If you're a student at Kent State University, you've probably stuck in traffic trying to turn a left from... On 261 to go south. It also made permanent the temporary one-way configuration at School Street. It's been temporary as long as I've been here, 11 years now. So now it's permanent. Instead of a piece of asphalt and a barrier, we now have a more complete, finished, one-way exit. Yes?
Could you tell me why you made it so narrow? If you drive up and all you see is tire marks on both sides of the curves?
Sure. So the width is set for one vehicle, okay? And I believe the width out there is 14 feet. So a designed car width is 6 and 1/2 feet. So if we make it too wide, people will get... Become uncertain of whether or not it's two lanes or one. And we could get two cars going next to each other. So it does make it a little tight if you're turning out at the McDonald's to get into the lane. But if you're coming up School Street, it should be straight and smooth. Okay? Good question. Thank you. Project... Okay, you should probably talk about how long it takes to get this done because we get questions all the time. It's got started in May, it's going to end in May. The reason why it takes so long is that it takes five months to get a signal pole in. By the time we hire the contractor, they look at what we spec, they place the order, then five months later, the pole will come in. Okay? So we started that in May, they order them in June, it comes in in November. And then we still have to add the turn lane and make some other changes. So therefore, we're stuck now in winter, therefore, we have to finish in the spring. So it's... The end date's in May of next year. The majority of the work you see out there that you see the lanes closed off, that will be done before we close up for the winter. Okay? They've got the interconnect in, they're putting the sidewalks over top at the south end. Once they're done with that, then the interruptions will be a little more sporadic when they actually go to work on the signals. The project costs $2 million. 95% of that is funded by outside funding sources. So we're paying 5% on that construction. The other reason that it takes a little bit of time is that utility companies have to move their lines out of the way as the new poles go up. So, thank God, this is the last time we're going to talk about Summit Street. This would be the third year of it. So I do want to start just from the beginning, why we did it, so it doesn't get lost, okay? Back when this started in 2015, Summit Street was the most congested road in Summit and Portage Counties, okay? We had 23% of all pedestrian accidents happened along that one-mile stretch of road, considering we have about 90 miles of road. To have 23% happen on one mile, we know that that's a bad area. Five of the top 15 worst crash intersections were in that same stretch of road. And the pavement condition was poor. At 46 out of a scale of 100, that's pretty bad. So not only did it need to be fixed structurally, it had crash issues, it had... So safety issues, had congestion issues. The good thing is, we were able to get 90% of that funded through five different funding agencies, including Kent State, who's helped out, paying half of the local share, but we couldn't get matched. So what we did this year is basically shown in this picture here. We finished from just a little east of Morris to Fraternity Circle, predominantly building the new roundabout that that intersection replaced two previous signalized intersections. So there used to be one here where Campus Center used to come out, and then one over here where Rizman used to come out. So that roundabout went in. That roundabout included Hawk Beacons. And thanks to the university, which helped us out, their communications department, we have an instructional video on how that works. So I want to show it because... So that you know and you can see. This worked a little bit ago.
The Summit Street Improvement Project includes this in its two roundabouts. The figures show that in the 17 months since the first roundabout opened, the number of reported crashes at the intersection has increased by 80%. The newest roundabout, the intersection's under Center Road and Britton Road and Hawk Beacon. Hawk Beacons are high and easily crossed. And the traffic control device used to make the safest of pedestrians across the street in high traffic areas. Here are some simple rules to remember about the Hawk Beacon at the roundabout. Blink, which is the green light. A yellow light at the bottom and two red lights at the top. The beacon will always come on when a pedestrian presses the button. Otherwise, the beacon will remain dark until held by a sharp light. When the beacon is dark, motorists should proceed through the roundabout as needed. Use the traffic already in a circle and the pedestrian already in a crosswalk. If the Hawk Beacon is flashing yellow, that means the pedestrian has pushed the button and vehicles should slow down. Motorists can still proceed through the crosswalk, but should do so with caution. When the beacon turns solid yellow, that means be prepared to stop. When the light is red, motorists must stop and allow pedestrians to cross. When the beacon is flashing red, vehicles must stop, but proceed through the crosswalk once it's clear. Remember, flashing yellow means slow down. Solid yellow means your red is stopped. And red means stop. Flashing red means stop, but you can proceed when the crosswalk is cleared. The Hawk Beacon can be used by the visually impaired to safely cross the street at the roundabout. And can also assist other pedestrians during periods of night traffic volume. When a pedestrian approaches the crosswalk, the pedestrian signal will be dark. If there is not an available gap of traffic control or a person with visual impairment, they should press the button. The pedestrian signal will indicate that it's safe to cross. Keep in mind that the beacon only stops one direction of traffic at a time. When a pedestrian reaches a median, they can press another button to safely cross to the other side of the road. Follow these simple guidelines and you will find navigating the newest roundabout as
So, the Hawk Beacons are... Were installed because... To allow for the visually impaired to cross the roundabout. Back in 2011, when we were going through the planning for this project, the PROAG is the Proposed Right-of-Way Guide... Access Guidelines, like ADA, but for in the right-of-way, mandated that you have these at the entrances to multi-lane roundabouts. Okay? So this is a one- and two-lane roundabout at this location. So those were installed at this roundabout. We like it how it's working right now because nobody's pushing the buttons. It's great. We don't want people pushing the buttons unnecessarily because they'll stop traffic unnecessarily. So, these Hawk Beacons, there's one in Akron. It was put in three or four years ago at the crossing of the Freedom Trail on Britton Road. They're slowly cropping up in other locations. So expect to see them more frequently. And if you watch the video, all the guy... The flashing yellow, we have flashing yellow beacons here in the city at Summit and Franklin. Flashing red, we have that at Mogadore and Cherry. You know, when it goes solid yellow, it's like any regular signal, stop. So it's just how they put that into that Hawk Beacon, you know, and it's process that are unusual for people to go through. This is a approved methodology... Approved method that's been tested across the country and it's put in the manual... Uniformated Traffic Control Devices. So, but for our area, it's sort of new. So Kent State put this out. They then put it out onto our website that we have and then sent it to everybody on Twitter and Facebook that's... That has signed up for that. So we're trying to get the information out there so people know how to use those roundabouts and those Hawk Beacons.
Excuse me, is that tied into our city also?
Yes.
So you're able to keep track of those?
Yes. That's correct. Mm-hmm. So it mentioned in the beginning of the video, and I think it was important to bring up right now because roundabouts have such controversy to them, they should at least say how these are functioning. So... And normally, after we build a project, we're not out there checking crash data every day. But, right, for these now, every week, we go up and check to see where crashes happen in the city. So, but like the video said, at the Ted Boyd Roundabout, which opened in November of 2016, there's been an 80% reduction in crashes. There were two crashes about three months... Within the first three months, they were both minor crashes. And then there hadn't been one since then, until last week. There's two last week, which didn't make my slide. So, but still, even with those, consider prior to construction, there were 14 crashes at that intersection in two years compared to the four. And there were injury accidents in that time period. So, definitely an improvement. The roundabout at Campus Center opened up in August of this year. There's been one non-injury crash that occurred in that intersection during that time period, which is about 12 weeks. And if you consider that there have been five crashes at the signalized intersections in that same 12 weeks, three at Lincoln and two at Morrison-Jannick, it shows you... It shows you that, you know, the thought that roundabouts are unsafe, not necessarily the case. It's still early, and so we're still going to monitor it to see how things are going and make changes as we need to, to make it safer. So, yes?
Now, have you decided whether you're going to put Hawk Lights at the Boyd Johnson Roundabout yet or not?
Yes. We are not going to put them at the Ted Boyd Roundabout. We sent a note about that earlier. We've been watching how that had been functioning. Our concern is how are pedestrians crossing the street with vehicles? And we hadn't seen any problems in that area. So since it wasn't mandated, we don't... We didn't recommend putting those in at that time, even though we had actually bid it originally. So we sent out a note about that about eight months ago to let council know that that was going forward that way. Something else that was built this year was stormwater wetlands. And these are... These wetlands are the size of three football fields, but you still may not see them if you're not driving down Campus Center, West Campus Center Road. They do two things predominantly. One, they're doing flood protection. So just adjacent to this area, the stormwater goes into a residential neighborhood down along May Street. And a detention basin was built back in the 80s between... With the university and the city working together. And it... When it was designed, it can hold and prevent flooding... Let me say it this way. There's a 10% chance it'll flood each and every year and overtop that basin, that older basin, okay? And the other thing about the older basin is it had one outlet, a small eight-inch orifice. And if something blocked that orifice, the only way the water was going to go out was going to go over the bank and then down through the backyards and through the homes. So with this project, we had to treat the stormwater that we were running off. So we decided to expand that existing basin. Expand is an understatement. It's three or four times the size it was before. And now we prevent flooding for any storm with less than a 1% chance of happening each and every year. And we have three different outlets. So all three would have to clog for it to actually flood the neighborhood. So, the other thing that the stormwater wetland does is it actually treats water quality. The original one didn't because back in the 80s, they weren't thinking about that. But now that's changed. This feature treats total suspended solids, nutrients, phosphorus, nitrogen, metals from when you step on the brakes, it wears off some of the metals, gets on the road, and then calcium from the salt. So the university biology department's actually doing studies to see how well it works. They did a study of the existing conditions before we tore it down. And now they're going to be doing studies after it's up and it's vegetated to see how well it's functioning. So this was a nice byproduct of the whole entire project. And again, that wetland was paid for 90% by other sources. So, what's left, first off, I guess I should say, it's under budget, which is a good thing. So much so that we're going to try to go to the grants that gave us the money to pay for our personnel time, to the tune of about $400,000. So we're going to be able to go forward and do that. We'll be working on that. Other things that we'll be working on, the signal timings. It looks like the signals are done. It, you know, they go red, yellow, green. However, the timings are not the final timings. You put them in, you let it adapt to traffic, and then you adjust it, you test it, see how it runs, then you adapt it again, test it again, until you get to the point where you've balanced the movements and the desires of the area as best as you can. So we're still in that process. I will admit, a week after it opened, I panicked. I was coming from the university architect's office, and I came down Summit Street, and I got stuck in a backup that was at least a half a mile long. And I didn't know what was going on. I cleared, went around, and came back, and the backup was all gone. I had called our manager and said, "What is happening?" And we just found out that we started making timing changes then, and now it works much better. It's happening during class changes. During class change, it's like an event leaving, okay? It's like a basketball game letting out. There's 3,000 or 4,000 people changing classes, and they're going to their cars and then leaving. And it's just a unique situation that our system should... Will be able to handle better than anything else out there. So, I'm going to shift gears a little bit. The next couple of things, we're just going to talk about pavements. Streets is the largest asset in the city. And I guess, I think Dave and I could probably agree, some... Largest asset could also equal largest liability. That means we have to spend the most money to keep it up to date and fixed. So these next jobs have to do with pavements, and then we'll sort of summarize it afterwards. So up here on the screen, there's two jobs that were done with ODOT's municipal paving program. This, they come to the city and say, "Hey, look, we're going to do this work on this state route. You owe... Pay us 20%. We'll match our 80% and we'll do this work for you." Understand, these state routes are city streets that are just signed for continuity. It's our responsibility to maintain them. They have this program voluntarily, okay? It caused a little bit of consternation this year because, you know, State Route 261 got paved, but it really didn't get paved as we would see paved. It got the surface course an inch and a half replaced, okay? 43 got done. It didn't... It looks paved, but it's a cold-applied asphalt, and it's only 3/4 of an inch thick. And that's with two layers added on to it. And all it's meant to do is seal the cracks, fill the ruts, and keep a smoother ride. Basically, extend the life of the pavement longer before they need to do any major work. So ODOT's shifting to a preservation-focused approach to managing their pavements. So in this transition period, what's going to happen is a street that had already passed its point of preservation, like... its point of preservation, like West Main Street, got, it missed this window, and it's going to be done a more full mill and resurfacing where they take off three inches, repair the, the bad areas, and then put three inches back on. So, it seemed though to the, the normal residents, like, why did you pave this street, which is obviously in better condition than this one? And the key is, well, this wasn't quite the same paving as you think it is, but that we're going to do on this next street. So, West Main Street's going to be paved in 2020. They've moved it up as much as they can within their budgetary constraints, and we're working with them to do as complete a repairs as possible. So then, hopefully, ideally, next time it gets into the cycle, it will have a micro-surfacing done first and not get all the way to the condition that it is in now. So, that's a change in direction for them. So that, thus lead us now to our street and sidewalk program. We did, we had a very large program this year. I'll talk about how much later. You can see the, the streets that we're doing sidewalk and pavement work, West College Downtown, Danzel, Cherry, South Lincoln, Dodge, Horning. We're also doing, Colleen was just resurfacing because Colleen doesn't have sidewalks. We're also doing street, doing some streets, just the sidewalks and not the pavement. This would be South DePister and West Grant. Now, due to the fact this is a large program and we're trying to adjust to it, and the big thing is, we doubled the size of the concrete work, so we doubled the amount of sidewalks being done. That is a time-intensive program because we're sending a letter to each resident saying, we've looked at your property, you need this replaced, it's going to cost you about this much, and you need to send us this letter back. So, we personalized 100 and plus different sites and had to give everybody some time to assimilate the fact that they just were sent a bill, basically, that's usually over $1,000, that they're going to have to pay as part of meeting our code. So, we don't, my staff does a really nice job in being sensitive to those people, you know, because they're not expecting it. So, this takes a significant amount of time. That's sort of pushed us back in our scheduling. So, some of these streets are getting paved this year, some of them are going to leak into the early next year. So, right now, South Lincoln's paved, Danzel's paved, Horning's probably going to get done next year because we want to make sure if we open it up to fix it, that we fix it before the asphalt plant shut down, which that happens typically around somewhere between November 15th and Thanksgiving. So, if we, if the weather's nice, they'll stay open a little longer. So, we also, the other streets you see up here, Brentwood, Overbrook, those are pavement repairs that were done in preparation for chip seal, for seal coat work. You can see we're doing 11 streets with pavement repairs that will be seal-coated next spring. The total cost for this year is $1.45 million, which is the largest amount that the city, of all city money that's been put in for the streets that I've gone back and could find, and I've gone back all the way to 2002. So, I'm pretty confident to say this is the larger amount, largest amount we've invested of our monies to work on the streets and sidewalks in the city.
Roger.
Oh, thank you. Yes?
You mentioned you're going to be doing Horning Road. Is there any slight chance that they're going to do anything so you don't have those ditches on the side when you come around, or is that just going to remain?
No, I think that's a great question. We have gotten, we have heard several problems along Horning Road. The deep ditches is one. The, the lack of sidewalk at the Newman Center is another. The tight, it's narrow where it comes out of Main Street for all three lanes. The reason why Horning Road has not been done yet is because we were trying to find a way to fix all those problems at once. We also have crash problems that happen at, where Loop ties into Horning and Horning at Main. So, we've been working with university architect's office and, and coming up with an estimate of what it would take to fix all those problems. Then, that number turned out to be around $2.4 million. So, we then looked at how to fund that between ourselves and the university, and basically what we found was that those problems weren't big enough for the amount of money that cost it was going to take to then put those in the plan as a separate project. So, we still know they're there. We still are going to try to find a way to fix it, but it's going to be trying to find when the time is right that we can get money set aside to fix those issues as well. So this, what we're doing is just going to try to fix the pavement that's really bad and fix the curb ramps that need to be done, and then move on and try to find a way to fund the rest of it. Yes?
You mentioned Norwood. How much of Norwood are you going to do?
That's a good question.
Are you going to do all of it, or are you going to stop at Beach?
You know, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm fairly certain we're going to do most of it, or I would have...
Because the area between Beach and Beach, when it goes...
Yep.
Okay, was done maybe three years ago, four years ago, but it was done in big blocks.
Mm-hmm.
And it blocked on this side, and then it blocked on this side.
Yep. Did it get seal-coated afterwards? Did it get seal-coated afterwards? They would like a...
Yes.
Yes?
But now those blocks are wearing out.
Right.
Where the chip and seal part on Norwood is fairly good. You don't have to go up and down and around.
You know, if you, if you get ahold of my office, we can let you know exactly which locations we're doing. I'm just sorry, I just don't remember off the top of my head today. So, but the, I'm glad you brought it up, though. But the idea is, what we're trying to get with those seal coat streets, we're going to try to hit them on a seven-year rotating basis. So, every seven years, you'll see them being repaired and seal-coated. That's the goal. Okay?
What about sidewalks? Part of Norwood has sidewalks and the other half of the street and the other section that's not.
Okay. Are you asking about the repairing of the sidewalks or adding new sidewalk?
Adding new sidewalks.
Or adding new sidewalks?
Adding new.
Okay.
Several residents have asked for sidewalks. I know.
Okay.
And, you know, there's no one through the city.
Sure. So, if they'd like to add new sidewalks, they can always call our office, and then we could go step them through. There's an assessment process to add sidewalks that way. Most people don't want to do that. Okay? The, the only project right now, the only program right now, we have that adds sidewalk in areas that don't have them, except for minor infill places, is what I started with at the beginning at Cedar Street, that whole south end from Cherry to 43 to the railroad tract to Summit. And I would anticipate after we finish that area, we'll stop and reassess where else we would want to do something like that. That would also go in line with CDBG's program and where the low to moderate income neighborhoods that make that eligible. So, but, when we do, when we do, I will say, if there's, if there's a gap, and it's just like, on the one side, you said there's sidewalk and part of the way, and...
On the south side of Norwood, from the right-of-way east to Longmere, there's sidewalks.
Okay.
On the north side, there's no sidewalks.
Okay. So, we probably wouldn't be getting to that anytime soon, but if there's a gap here or there, we would fill those in. So, yes?
Isn't it possible that within the next few years, depending on where funding comes from, that we could have a bike trail going through there that would take the place of the sidewalk, would be utilized by walkers?
Um, potentially.
That connection, you know, comes out.
So, we're, what Roger's getting to is, we're working with the city of Akron to, they have a water line that goes through this area, and we can connect basically from the Freedom Trail all the way up to the high school along that path. And we're working with John Idoney to try to, to make that happen. But what I do see happening when that, when that happens is that then we want to strengthen the connections from the streets to get to that trail, and that may drive more need for sidewalks. We also look at, you know, some people who live in those areas don't want sidewalks. So, we, we try to balance that because they sort of bought a house and they like that. It's more like a rural look than a urban look, and Kent's got a little bit of everything in it, so...
Well, the walkway was put in, you know, the property owner's half of the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
But they were only put in Longmere to Francis, Francis to Monroe Falls on one side, on the north side, not on the south side.
It's sporadic in that part of town. It is definitely, the sidewalks, his construction is sporadic, so... Hopefully, in the future, we can look into that area and see about making things more consistent and, and being, and being better connected. That's really, in the end, that's what it is. I mean, maybe sidewalk on one side's good as long as it goes from one place that you want to walk to, to another that you want to walk to. You know, just...
On Norwood, it stops at the right-of-way.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. And like I said, give us a call, give my office a call, and we can let you know. Yes, Rob?
Generally, I have to be up on the moment, maybe we had this discussion, and some of the sidewalks had been pushed up, and people were notified that it was made. Strangely enough, what they did was they banned it out, and then I guess there was somebody out there who had the facility to actually correct the issue of being pumped up, and it was very phenomenal. I, I don't know how we can go back to determine if that is acceptable.
Well, we would send our, our people out to inspect it, and if they've got rid of the gap, the lip, the, the vertical separation displacement by, usually what they do is inject grout underneath and lift the sidewalk up. If the rest of the sidewalk's in good condition, then it's fine. So, repair doesn't always mean tear out and put new in.
We do make a vital payment if you want...
Yes.
Set up a process of wage...
Right. And that's, yeah, and we talked about earlier about how the concrete program's fairly time-intensive because the first thing we have to ask somebody, and we say, hey, we're going to have to fix the sidewalks, is, do you want us to fix, or do you want to fix it yourself? And, and that takes time. And then they're going to say, oh, I was thinking about doing that just yesterday, so I think I'll do it myself. No, we give them time to consider that and think about what's best for them, so... Everything okay?
It's good.
So, let's talk about how we manage pavements, basically, and how we determine how much money needs to go into those pavement, pavements. Okay? We have the pavements evaluated every other year. An outside firm comes out, they rate every street based on the American Society of Testing Materials standards. So, they're unbiased, and it's a set methodology of how they do it. And then they come back with rankings from zero to 100, and you can see the rankings on the side, what's considered excellent down to failed. The chart here shows the city's ratings since we started. Back in 2002, it was a 67. You can see it dropped down to a 64 in 2009 when it was rated, and since then, we've been slowly working its way back up. This last rating was fairly good, coming in at 67. But I find, what, what does that mean? Okay, what's 67? 67, it's more than half, right? It says there, it's, it's between fair and almost good. I'll give you a comparison to other cities in our area that have, this same company does their ratings and uses the same methodology. So, if you could see up there, we have Kent with 89 centerline miles, says a rating of 67. A little more wealthier cities, Hudson and Green, a little bit better pavement conditions. Akron and Kaiga Falls, sort of a worse pavement conditions. Now, it should be noted that Akron just passed an income tax increase to pay for their streets, and I believe police as well. And to give, I'll do credit and, to Kaiga Falls, this is their first rating. They've never had it done before. So, they're just, for the first time, seeing this is how their city stacks up. So, but even that shows that, well, that doesn't give quite the whole story either because that means, you know, there's some good streets and there's some bad streets. So, this is a graph showing how each, basically by category, how much pavement is good condition, excellent condition, or very good. You can see there's a lot in excellent and very good because we've made, you guys have directed us to make a big effort in the last five to seven years to make sure the streets are in good condition, so that's being reflected in that. I will say, the calls all come from the areas over there that failed and very poor. So, council that was here when Rockwell came about and people were coming and complaining how bad the street was, it had a rating of 22 at that time. Okay? So, this failed and very poor consists of what, 4.7% of our street network? Back in 2014, that failed and very poor categories was 9%. So, we've been able to cut that in half in those last five years. That's a marketed difference than what ODOT's preservation-minded is. Okay? It's not quite worst first because I think that would be underselling what we're trying to do. We're still doing maintenance-level operations to keep overtime, to keep these streets, which over time, they sort of move their way to the left. Okay? They get older, their ratings get worse. You're losing two or three points a year in most cases. So, while we're fixing these, we're trying to keep these in good condition, okay, before it gets worse. And so far, and it's, it's starting to pay off, it seems like. So, it's a, a validation of the, the amount of money that is being invested into it, and we try to keep doing this, try to keep us at or slightly increasing in our pavement condition. So, I'm going to shift gears a little bit because this year, there's, starting this year and really working into next year, there's, there's some significant planning efforts going on for other projects to move forward that you probably should be familiar with. State Route 261, we talked about that a little bit last year. It, basically, the road was designed to be an interstate at one time. It's never going to be an interstate. They've sold off the land, they've got scrapped all those plans. So, right now, we need to right-size that piece of infrastructure. Okay? Also, because I, there are safety problems that have, that are generated at the intersections of Franklin, Sunnybrook, Mogadore, 43. The only reason why there's not the same ones at Campus Center is because we, how the lights function, we don't allow people to turn left on, with, unless it's a protected face. So, and we've had people come into council complaining about trying to cross 261. We've got Maple, Maple Brook on the south end, Indian Valley. They're across the street from a Marx, and they can't walk, it's hard to walk to it crossing 261. So, if the street was right-sized, it would be easier to cross. To give you some example, we talked about it last year, but there's only about 8,000 cars a day that take that piece of 261 that I'm showing up there. There's 14,000 cars a day on Fairchild Avenue on the west side of town, and it's a two-lane road. So, we started working with the committee to come up with solutions. You see one of the solutions right now is, this is going, traveling eastbound towards Franklin and Sunnybrook. As part of the planning process, we talked to the Porch Parks District, and their overall master plan, the countywide master plan for their greenway plan shows this is 261. They're showing regional connectivity trails in the 261 corridor. Why are they doing that? Because it's the only piece of land that connects the whole way through that is already under control. And when you consider that the right-of-way out there is 200 feet wide, I could put three roads in a 200-foot-wide right-of-way corridor. So, the question is, what do we do with that? So, this shows an image of what could be a compelling, what I, actually, I think is a compelling change, is this is looking east of 43, this 261. This would be the original park trail facility connected to Lincoln Street and all the residential neighborhoods that live in there. Now, nobody who lives there wants a roadway connection to 261, but they all wouldn't, wouldn't mind having a connection to a regional bike trail right at the end of their street. So, and that's what we were hearing from the group. Now, this project has sort of been put on hold for a little bit because of the next one, which is East Main Street. So, there'll be people that say, you guys are only looking at East Main Street because the university's got a master plan, and they want to do something. And you can have some people who say, well, you're only looking at East Main Street because the Starbucks went in, and people are upset. And I'll tell you, we're looking at East... went in, and people are upset. And I'll tell you, we're looking at East Main Street because of all of the above and more, okay? The university master plan leads us to a unique opportunity to make improvements in an area that need improvements. So, why are we looking at it? I'm going to start with safety. I really should start with safety, emphasize safety. East Main Street is the worst crash corridor in Kent, in Portage County, and Summit County, okay? The worst crash corridor. It has the second-worst crash intersection in the city at Main and Lincoln, which was only second to Summit and Lincoln before we finished it, hopefully before we finished it. And then, it's got auto crashes, it's got pedestrian crashes, it's got bike crashes, okay? That's a dubious honor, being the worst crash corridor in the city. So, we, without the university doing anything, without a development happening, we would still be looking at this area to fix. That's why we did Summit Street before that, that's why Crane Avenue was done in part. So, that is, that's one of the main issues we're trying to solve there. We're also, the next part, the corridor development, sort of leads to, that quotes from the Bicentennial Plan, saying that emphasis should be placed to direct traffic to destinations while minimizing negative effects in residential areas. I mean, that's directly to the point that we, anything we do in there, we want to make sure people get on Main, stay on Main, okay? And not cut through Luther to Crane to 43 if they're going through, you know? We want people to feel that they could, it's, it's not congested, and they can drive through that area. We also think that, look, the, the people who live on the other side of Main have a great resource at Kent State for the theater that's there, the front campus, which is like a park. You know, we would like these people to be able to walk through that area, you know, have it better connected. Right now, if you tried to walk on East Main Street, it's not really very comfortable being right next to the, the semis that drive through there, so. And then, like I said, Kent State's master plan brings an opportunity that they're investing money in that area, in that corridor. Maybe we can work together like Summit Street and find a better solution for ev, all the problems, not just some of them. But to do that, the first thing you need to do is find out what are the problems. So, the study's meant to, to develop what we call a purpose and need. What are the needs? What purpose are we trying to accomplish? Then, come up with alternates that would meet that. And at that point, after that's gone through a public process and come back to council, then we'll say, okay, now, go find some money to make it happen. And going back to the first part, with safety, being highest on that list means you have access to funding to fix those problems, because that's a priority to the state. Another, uh, planning level, this one had a very public showing, thanks to Harrison very much. Thank you. That kid's, he's got a lot of energy. I missed that. So, the whole Better Block event that happened was, in part, showed some potential changes to the street that, but going back to what we've talked about before, we get calls all the time about problems. Well, this is another one of those, we had a whole bunch of issues happening at this area, and how to best solve them. I mean, we know, we said, say, let's, let's add crosswalks at, at Portage. Seems simple, give me a can of paint, paint a couple of lines. Problem is, that's not a safe crossing. It's 54 feet to cross, two lanes of road in between parked cars, people stepping out. That's not the best, safest way to do it. Also, if we did that, we'd have to lose four or five parking spots, and then people would say, boy, now you're going to take, get rid of parking? Well, everyone knows how bad parking is downtown. So, this, by the time we took a look at everything here, by more effectively utilizing the space in the road, we were able to add better pedestrian facilities, get more parking spots, and do it in such a way that basically slows traffic down, which then makes the road safer. Because I talked about East Main Street, East Main Street being the worst crash located corridor in the city, well, North Water was the second. So, and we did get, we were successful getting funding from the Highway Safety Program to do this work, so. Thank you, Harrison. Last one on the planning method. This, this has been going on for a little bit a while. This is not actually planning for a project, but council had asked to look at basically changing how we build for stormwater utilities, going away from an ERU, equivalent residential unit, and going into a square foot cost. Now, I'm not going to, this is not a discussion about that. We're going to schedule one of those coming up in the near future. We have the information, we're just trying to find the time, because frankly, it's a heady subject, okay? So, but some of the key things that we got done, aerial mapping's been updated, we calculated the impervious area on 7,200 individual properties down to a square foot, okay? A square foot. Then we talked about how to determine what rate to charge per square foot, and there's questions that come up in that. We've talked about, look, well, it's going to take more time annually just to manage 7,200 individual accounts. It's not somebody getting paid, spending a $4.30 bill. Now, they're getting an individually-based charge, and if they change something on their property that's this big, you know, they should be charged more, saving more. So, all those processes have to be, compared to right now, we have 300 commercial customers that do that. So, some of the preliminary findings that have come out, first off, we've identified some parcels that don't look like they're getting built. We're cleaning those up now, okay? Working with budget and finance, central maintenance, and others, we're trying, we'll get those straightened out. Some of the other results, though, are, were unexpected. I, I think they're unexpected from my perception what other people are, think was going to come out, okay? The whole idea of this, my understanding, was to see a more equitable charge in the residential units. So, in other words, some with a small house pays less than someone with a real big house. So, the graph that you see there, if we charged per square foot based on a rate that was established by basically just dividing the $4.30 divided by the average ERU size, which is like 1,600 square feet or something, this is what people would be billed. These are the residential customers. There's about 5,000 residential customers. If you look at this, this is the difference that they would charge. 90% of the residential customers will be charged the same or more than they are now. I like the look on your face. That's exactly what we thought. You know, why is this like that? That's not what we were expecting. We were expecting a bell curve and 50 would be around the middle. So, I'm going to try to explain that briefly here. So, we have, just try to graph, try to, small house, medium-sized house, big house, the ERU should be somewhere in the middle, right? However, back when the stormwater utility was established, an equivalent residential unit included multi-unit complexes, Tower 43, you know, any duplex, triplex, any Silver Meadows area, all stuff like that. I could tell you here, right, right here and right now, Tower 43, where there's a unit, and a unit, and a unit, and a unit. They have very little impervious area relative to each unit. So, that shifts the average ERU closer to the small residential house size. So, just letting you know a little bit about that. We're going to come back in a few months when we can get time on the agenda to discuss more specifically in detail about this, so that you can have a better understanding. But we have been working on it and trying to get that under, to the point where we can present something, so. And we're, we're about there. Couple miscellaneous things, because they just, you know, we're still getting, we had a storm sewer fail somewhere, time this year, and we had to go fix it. We fixed that right away. Traveling stanzas, we expanded that program with the Wick Poetry Center. Those have been installed, they look great. And then, the other thing is, if you've been downtown, you may have noticed some of the new tree grates that we've, that are out there. We tested this out for about three years. Those are, are pervious, the water flows through them. They, they, we found that they're, we believe they're going to be beneficial from a few stuff, a few things. One, the metal tree grates are pretty unforgiving. As the tree gets bigger, they sort of push out and cause problems. I don't wear heels, but some of those tree grates, if you're walking in heels, you can't walk across them. This stuff you can. It's more flexible, more permeable, and we think it's going to hold up better. So, we're starting to try to change out at least the old ones that have failed first, and to get those all cleaned up, so that we can make downtown nice, so. Last thing, key endeavors for next year, street and sidewalk program is going to be first. It's almost always going to be first. If it's not first, it's going to be second. We're going to finish some construction on 43. We got a water, a water main to replace on Hudson. We got storm sewer and water replaced on Valley View Morris, pump station work. And then, you're going to see, we're going to get into those planning-level things to try to get the next set of projects ready for construction, so. That's all. Thank you. I know it was a long time, but I appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Sir, any questions from council at this point? So, Mr. Ruler, there, is there any action that you want our committee, other than we receive Jim's report?
Just, just receive it, and be grateful. We have such a good engineering group. I mean, Jim is one among, I won't say many, but certainly more than just him, and we get a lot done. And it's really, I, I do, it takes an hour, and that's at fast pace for Jim. He could probably take another hour, and, but, you know, on the one hand, I hate to rush him, because so much good work is done, and we don't always get the chance to kind of see it all at once like that. And so, I certainly, I'm extremely grateful, because he's not only good at the engineering stuff, probably more importantly to our conversations, he's really good at getting grant money too, so, and leveraging other people's money. So, we get a lot done at a per-unit at a really competitive rate, so.
And I think it's appropriate, we have a larger community here tonight, that they can hear some of these things, because sometimes I know if you're sitting at home, they're wondering, gosh, what does the engineer do, right? All right, the next thing we have on our agenda is proposed update to the city's solid waste recycling code. I'm guessing-
This is an item Hope has asked you to consider, so I'll let her run it through for you.
As you recall, when we spoke a few weeks ago about the Douglas lawsuit, there was one issue that I brought to you that, well, there's a lot of issues that need to be changed in our, both our recycling code and our regulations, and Melanie and I are going to be working on that and hopefully bringing the whole package to you in January or February. But, as a result of our conversation regarding that lawsuit, it was my understanding that council said, let's, let's make this change right now to get the language from residential unit to billing unit correct, and that's what I've done here.
Is there any questions from council at this point? Any questions from the community? Seeing no questions, do I have a motion to accept this?
Accepted.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. I, Mr. President, I'm, I'm done.
A switch. Mike, I don't want to be presumptuous, but my, I know you have a Main Street contingent back there, and, and-
Well, we can do that.
Maybe let them go before the cap plan?
Yeah.
Jack, you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, Jack, this, your committee now, first round's on Main Street.
Isn't that both under finance?
No, it's still, it's under finance.
All in finance.
It's all in your control, Mike.
It's all me. Okay, we'll go right to Main Street.
All right, well, um, yes, I see Bridget is back there too, but the Main Street item, we're asking, what? You can't get out? I know that, I know. It, believe it or not, it's time for renewal of the contract. It all blends together to me. It seems like we just did it yesterday, but it's, it's been a number of years, so. We're bringing it back. We've had a series of conversations with Main Street about the contract, really, and I've noted this in my communication. You know, when we started this, we had originally, way, way back, agreed to get them started at a contribution up to $75,000 a year from the city. And it was knowing that we were carrying a larger burden than maybe a lot of the Main Street programs, but we felt it was worth it. I think they've proven that it's been worth it. And we did cut that down over the last rounds of contracts to 65 or 60?
60.
60. And we had the expectation, expectation when we started this, of probably keeping it about there. We had a series of meetings, though, and Dave Coffey included, and as you know, he's no easy sell when it comes to spending more money. You know, we, we talked about how much more work Main Street is doing today than even when we started. I mean, they've, they've far exceeded our expectations in terms of, particularly in terms of events. I mean, it has become our hallmark, our signature is our events, and it's what distinguishes us from the Hudson's of the world and the Ravenna's of the world, and, basically, our competition, right? In the, in the world of attracting people to come spend money in our community or to enjoy our community, and Main Street is probably our strongest asset. So, all that being said, we are asking in this renewal to go up 10 grand more than the 60, which would be 70. So, it's still less than when we started. We think it's money well spent. I, I just want to be very upfront about that, that it is more, we'll, we'll absorb that cost within our budget. So, overall, if you're worried, I, I even said, well, I'll take it out of our economic development budget, 10,000 out of that, and give it to them, because they do such stellar work for us. And I can't think of a better investment in terms of economic development than what they do. And I know the stores downtown pretty much to a T have said their, their record sales days are on those event days, so.
Clarify, the ED budget's actually under CD, so.
Right, right. So anyways, that, I just wanted to be clear about that. That was, that, that is different than our last contract. Everything else, pretty much the same, I mean, the, the term and so forth, and sorry, I, I spoke more than I-
He did hit on everything. If you may remember, the first set of contracts was actually linked to the revenue, so there was a great deal of time spent by staff reconciling it. So, the number would vary. At high, we were at 68, and then we had some offsets below that. The new, this would be the second cycle under a set flat rate. I will tell you, as the administrator of this contract, it is much easier to work with. I've also seen through their, their financial reports, as well as the, the quarterly summaries they provide, that the revenue that they've generated to support themselves, as well as attendance, has gone up exponentially. So, the increase, while it, it is 10,000, it is actually money well spent with regards to the return on the investment, from what we saw when this very first started, under the prior, when it was first coming, where the city became their partner.
Questions?
So, you were talking about when we first started, because I know there was a formula that the Heritage Ohio goes, where the city should chip in a third of the revenue for Main Street, and then, the Main Street should generate a third some other way, and a third some other way. So, we're not going to stick to that anymore. We're just going to give them a flat rate.
This current contract, actually, that's expiring at the end of December, is not that. We have actually, the, the cycle that's ending now, it was a two-year with a one-year extension, so a three-year was a flat rate of 60,000. We moved away from that reconciliation. The primary staff assigned to that reconciliation was David Coffey and myself, and we spent a great deal of time reconciling to get to that number, because you have to realize it has to stand up to auditing standards as well. By doing the flat rate, they still are giving us their revenue expense sheets. I actually get their 990s at the end of the year as well, but it's much easier to document and identify the flat rate than the time spent. Dave could speak to it as well, but one of the things we were definitely advocating for was moving away from that model, because it's extremely difficult to document and to reconcile.
And then, I thought, another goal was for the city to be weaning Main Street off of so much help, because I know now this is going to be, I believe it's going to be more a percentage of, of their income than, than it would have been before.
Yep, we talked about that too. It is, I know, something that we were looking at doing with the discussions that we had, though, with the, I don't think anyone anticipated the scope and volume of the events and the attendance that would come with that. Many of the businesses downtown report they've had their highest sales associated with these events. I can tell you, as the person that works with Tom on monitoring the vacancy rates, when a, when a doorway goes dark, I get nervous. So, having people come, and if the event So, having people come, and if the event is sometimes the first clue to get them to come to Kent, and they see something, like they come back, that is money well spent, and it's not money that you can maybe objectively identify, but if you go to any of the events and you see the attendance, and you talk to the store owners and proprietors, they will tell you that they are extremely successful for them.
Roger.
There's nothing, Bridget, I'll make it a question. Is there anything in the Main Street, the big Main Street, international rules and everything? Nothing would not allow us just to have flat rates?
There's different models, just like there are for landings, I mean, there is obviously models that maybe you see more of, of a certain type, but, you know, communities have to identify what works best for them. Different Main Streets operate differently. As you know, I think Ravenna's been advertising for somebody to take that position for months, so I think their Main Street might be a little slower on the uptick than ours was. So, you can't really take one model and apply it to all. I am extremely comfortable with this model. I know that both Dave Coffey and Dave Ruler are as well. If we weren't, if there wasn't the performance that we saw, if we saw that we were paying mostly for administration, and we weren't getting a return for, with regards to what, how the businesses were benefiting, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We would be talking differently about looking at a different funding structure. I don't see that, though. I see nothing but increase in attendance and an increase in events.
And one more, if I, so, we're viewing this as leveraging, that $70,000, we're actually leveraging by increasing business, which in turn then increases income tax revenue, which increased, goes for the whole city.
Correct.
Is that how we're viewing that?
Exactly. And I will say that this is a two-year contract with a one-year renewal, so if there was, this would then not lock us into something too long-term, which we were all reluctant to do, because we do recognize that the income tax receipts this year have seen a downturn. We don't want to commit ourselves to something we may not be able to uphold three years from now, so it would be for 2019, 2020, with the third year coming back to you for consideration and review.
John?
So, do we have any figures, if we look at 70,000, what proportion that Main Street would actually be providing also?
Well, we do. We get their, we have their, in fact, I have their 2017 revenue and expense sheet, so yes, we do get that and look at that. They have, I have a copy here, if you'd like to see it, but we do look at it.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to know, you know, where we are in the ratio.
Yep, yeah, actually, well, this would be, the one I have for 2017 would be based on the current contract, which is at $60,000 a year, but I have, I brought copies, just in case you were going to ask for them. I'll get them to Tara, and she can share them with everyone.
And then, I don't even know if this is possible to do, but is there, or have you, or is there a way that you can, I don't even, you can't say verify, but know what difference in city income comes in because of Main Street's additions? I mean, it's...
Unfortunately, that is too many degrees removed. I can tell you, though, that for businesses that are retail-driven, and the food establishments that derive most of their income and revenue from patrons walking through their doorway, the more events we have that are heavily attended, the better off they are. I can tell you, too, that I know we've had some casualties, as you know, in the food establishments of those, those of us that know the backstory of them, they were not associated with lack of customers, it was some internal management issues. So, that tells me, as long as we keep encouraging events and bringing people to the downtown, that they can walk through the doors, if the properties are managed well, they should be successful.
I guess, I guess my only concern would be, yes, it would benefit the owner's profitability of the businesses, but is that passing by to the taxpayers of Kent by services that are rendered from additional income that are coming in? Because it's not put any money unless the person of the resident in Kent that owns the business.
Well, they do have to keep employees. Many of the food establishments, as a former server and bartender through college and graduate school, they run with a lot of part-time staff. Through that employment, while it doesn't generate the type of income tax revenue we see from an Amatec or a Davey, it does make a difference in our bottom line. So, our goal is to always keep them open where they are making those hires, because if they don't, if the doorway goes dark, and they're not hiring, we lose the profit tax, and we lose the income tax. So, the goal is to keep customers going through their doors.
So, you feel that by the efforts of Main Street, they've added enough additional revenue that the whole city's residency would benefit because of that, not just a few?
I agree. Yes, I do. I think the bottom line on the income tax is benefiting from the success of our downtown, and the success of our downtown isn't just the bricks and mortar. That was basically laid the template, but in order to keep it thriving, you need to have events that bring people into town. I've been doing this work since 1997. I have colleagues that are no longer employed, because they did downtown redevelopments that failed. The buildings aren't what bring it, it's events and activities that draw customers into the town and keep the businesses running.
Not to put you on the spot, if you don't know it off the top of your head, Heather might, but the number of volunteer hours that Main Street Kent volunteers have put in, has that also increased over the number of years that Main Street's been...
I don't have that figured, but I'm sure that Heather could speak to that, and I just know from seeing the increase in the events, not only in terms of how many are in attendance, but the footprint of them, and how much labor is involved. I would say that I could definitely say volunteer has gone up. She might be able to give you specifics, though.
So, just in terms of community participation, community participation and investment through volunteerism has also exponentially increased?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Garrett?
Just a ballpark figure of what it would cost for the city to try to do the same thing, and the number of employees that it would take versus what it costs us to put $70,000 towards?
I couldn't give you a number, but it would be more. I can tell you that. Time and a half for a union guy to move and block streets, things like that, where they would have to basically be running the events. We actually, not only do not have the staff, we wouldn't have the financial resources to put them onto the scope and scale that they are here.
Plus benefits?
Yes.
And retirement and all that.
Yeah, I mean, if I can, I mean, don't dismiss that volunteer hours, as she just referenced, it's a big number.
Right, right.
And people don't usually volunteer for city-run services. Now, they'll volunteer for a community organization like Main Street, so you, you're talking a quarter of a million dollars, you know?
That's, I guess, my point, I was trying to reiterate, is that...
That's why from ours...
The cost, the cost for a city to do it.
We couldn't do it cheaper, absolutely.
We wouldn't be doing it to this scale either, I can tell you that.
Right.
We do what? Heritage Fest is our only sponsor, and we actually use it non-prefer that, and that is time-consuming, let alone the number of events that are put on Main Street, basically year-round.
You'd have to have a full-time person, wouldn't you? Or several full-time people to do what we're getting out of Main Street.
Further questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Move to authorize?
Second.
With emergency?
Discussion?
I would just say, you know, they continue to do a great job. I follow them on social media, and that's getting better and better. Every year, it gets better and better, and more and more professional, and it's a testament to the leadership there, and to the volunteers, and it's a testament to Kent and the Kent citizens, and how much we care about the city, and for the city to financially back them, it's such a small, it's a small amount for the size of the return that we all get from it, so, thank you.
Roger?
Well, I would defer to Mr. Farrar's expertise on finances, but it would seem to me that if we got a 10% return on that 70,000, anyone would love to have 10% return in this day and age on money invested, and I got to believe that if Main Street didn't continue to have all of these activities and bringing people into town, why, I would concur with John, it would be nice to see a one-to-one, but I don't think that's possible. I think that those businesses, they have their uptimes and their downtimes, but if you took the Main Street activities away, there would be so many downtimes that chances are, they would end up having to lay off employees. So, it would seem to me that it's a great return on investment for the whole community, and I think that, obviously, it's a, Main Street has become a part of the fabric of this community, so.
Gwen, and you?
I would just like, going back to the volunteers, I think that's a statement by our residents who live here, that find that participating, not just as attendees, but also volunteering, is a tremendous network and outpouring of confidence and support that it lends to a quality of life living here, and I think that that, that's indicative of residents supporting Main Street Kent, so I think that they've done a phenomenal job. And if I recall, it was like thousands of hours. It wasn't a small number, it was many, many, many hours of hard work, and then to attend at the events. So, I think it provides a great network and a great sense of community, and I think that that has a tremendous amount of value, although it's difficult to articulate in dollar signs.
John?
You know, when Main Street first started, I was adamantly opposed to it, and I think rightfully so, because it wasn't operating very well, and it wasn't doing the things that they were presented to do. But then they had to change the leadership with Main Street, and I think that has been the whole key to the success, because the leadership has been doing a tremendous job, and everybody knows me, I don't like spending money, but... No.
Your own money.
But I, especially mine, but I think is a good, solid investment for the city. Further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to...
Can we get the big beer mugs next year at Oktoberfest, too, for that? I'm not saying that's a quid pro quo, but just...
Bigger.
There was big ones, and there was smaller ones. I didn't get the big one. Disappointed.
Don't ask for any more.
Are you coming up for the appropriations, or the...
Oh, my gosh.
You gonna do your appropriations now?
Yeah, do his...
Capital Plan.
Okay. Well, you can, you're gonna be up there for a while, though.
Really?
Unless, well, no, I guess, I don't know.
Perhaps Dave would like to make some...
Sure. Well, as he makes his way, it's, as I noted earlier, tonight is the Capital Plan presentation, and, I mean, I think ultimately, most of your interest is in the projects and the kind of work that you saw Jim run through. There's more of that in here. Most of you have been through this process before, so you kind of know how we do this, but I always feel a little guilty, because a lot of time goes into getting to this point and getting this long document together and spreadsheets, and I promise, we do try to make those as simple as possible, but they're still a little complicated, but I have to tell you, that's part and parcel to the work, I think, in some respects. At least, that's what Dave Coffey likes to present, that image. But a lot of good work, and it really starts from the people that run the water plants, that work in the water plants, the sewer plants, drive the trucks, work in the buildings, and, you know, kind of starts there, and ultimately works its way through our processes to ultimately get a list of the top priorities. And even in the good times, we never have enough money to do all the projects that need to get done, so there's a triage that goes into this, a prioritization, so you're seeing a reduced document from what we could put in, and even what Jim Bowling would like to see. There's things in here that are pushed out, there are things that are left out altogether, and the critical stuff remains in. And, again, it is a credit to council that, frankly, that you do multi-year planning. Not a lot of communities do that, and that's a great sort of best practice that we've had for years now, and I think it pays results. And I think it allows Jim to be more strategic in planning the work, optimizing the cost, optimizing partnerships, leveraging other people's money, getting grants. When you do a multi-year, when you keep a multi-year perspective, those things become possible, so that's great. And I said to Gwen this morning, when I was talking to her a little bit, it's also a credit to the community that we have this 25% charter requirement. You know, it is not unusual or unheard of in communities, as times get tight, the first thing they say, let's defer some of that street work, or this work, or that maintenance work, stuff that may be out of sight, out of mind today, but, you know, you can only do that so many days before that rears its ugly head, and it's usually a lot more expensive. So, the 25% charter requirement sort of guarantees an annual commitment of our capital, of our funding to go to capital, which really, like I say, is a testament. And it's no surprise, when you look at that list, you know, Jim's chart of the streets and the comparison with our, with some of our peer cities, I mean, we're, in my opinion, we're kind of hidden out of our, above our, what's the phrase, playing way now? We're doing better than...
We're making our coverage.
Yeah, yeah. We're a small city, we're not a rich city, but we do, we have great results, and I think that's because we've been a strategic and smart group as a team, and this plan is kind of what allows us to do that. It's our way to translate the priorities to you in a way that hopefully makes sense to you. So, you'll hear, I mean, we don't typically go through project by project, and Dave will cover some of the highlights. There's no surprises in here, I don't think, and most everything you will have already seen in the previous year as an out year, and it's now become the in year, and that is important to remember, too, is you adopt a five-year plan, but for all practical purposes, the only money you're going to appropriate is for the next year, you know, and so, for planning purposes, we have four years after that, that's important, but don't feel locked in. I mean, I think that's important, and so the out years are always more flexible, and they're just our way to kind of manage our way forward, and you'll see that stuff again. Trying to think of any other things I want to mention in there. The rate plans, again, testament to council's foresight, rather than going through the living in, up high one year, low the next, high the next, or the kind of double-digit increases that places like Akron have had to deal with in their utility funds, we, as a group, took an approach of multi-year planning with our rate plans, and tried to stabilize that in a more normalized, more tolerable hit and predictability for everybody. And we're on the rate plans this year, it's 3% in the respective water and sewer funds, which are consistent with what you approved back 2011 and last year, too. And so with that, I guess I'll just, if I think of other stuff as we go along, but I'll let you take it from here.
Try to be brief. Can't be.
That's what Jim said, too.
Yeah, Jim said it. Oh, forget that. But if council was pleased with what Mr. Bowling and company have accomplished during this past year, and I would add to that what public safety, fire, and police have, you've witnessed them accomplishing on the streets for the community this past year, then I hope that you will also be pleased with the proposed plan that you have in front of you in this, in this document. As in previous years, given, as Dave said, given the volume of this document and so forth, given the fact that we're, for 2019, proposing 51 funded projects, I don't intend to stand here and go through project by project, but I certainly would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning any of the projects specifically. But rather, I would just make a couple of general observations as it is, and I guess I would start with talking about the General Government Capital Fund, which we call our 301 Fund, and that, and comment about that, that we are current, the first thing we do with this, with this process is that we true up the current fiscal year. So, that's why you see the year 2018 in this plan, because even though you approved 2018 last year, that was a forward-looking view of 2018, and as we know, periodically, we've made budget amendments and so forth to that. So, what you see in the 2018 spreadsheets, where we list the projects individually, is what I would call the true up, right up to the present time for the 2018 expense plan for capital, and so that does, in fact, bring us right up to date. We basically, for 2018, had, lost my place here. We did revise the target, the charter requirement down a little bit for 2018, given the fact of our income taxes, we've talked about before, is off from projected levels this year, so we've brought that down to the $3,350,000, as you'll see on page 5, 5 of 5 for 2018. And... And that actually had the effect of putting us a little bit above charter and, and, and actual planned dollar expenditures, but that in itself doesn't really present that much of a problem. At present, the General Government Capital Fund has adequate reserves, and we're, we do not see that as a problem. We also, I would also mention that, you know, we had our reappropriations that were just a little bit over a million dollars, a million thirteen thousand eight oh seven, to be exact, from previous year projects. So that, that will add to the spend down for the fund balance for the current year, just so you know. Yes.
Can we ask stuff about this now?
Sure.
By all means.
So on page one of five, I was supposed to bring this up, I, Ms. Schaefer wanted me to bring this up. So it says sidewalk tree damage repairs were $15,000 for this year. It's page one of five on 2018.
Okay.
It's like the sixth thing down. Sidewalk tree damage was 15,000. And then I noticed it drops the next year in 2019 down to 5,000. I thought we had put aside 10,000 for sidewalks every year. Is that not true?
Well, we did, we had, we had 10,000, I believe it was 10,000, and we did a reappropriation of 5,000 additional, is my recollection.
Every year we re-appropriated it.
I'm sorry, that's, yeah, I had that a little bit, yeah. So it was 5,000 with the reappropriation of 10,000.
And that was only for sidewalks that the city was responsible for, for tree damage, correct? Because I thought we put money aside, too, to repair, to repair like the single, because usually the city goes and repairs sidewalks when they're doing street work and everything else like that. And then I thought we put aside this specific money to repair like individual blocks and things like that.
Yes. That, that was the 5,000 based on council's action 2016. The only, the only clarification I would say is that the code, no matter what the cause, the code still is the property owner's responsibility, whether it's a tree damage or not. It's still a responsibility of the property owner. But that section, that, as we interpret what that project is, it's basically ability to give us money to go fix out small ones that would be reimbursed totally by the city.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And the fact that it was re-appropriated, I think is, is, gives evidence to the fact that, you know, just because it wasn't expended in a given year, that money is not lost. So it will, in essence, essentially accrue when it's not expensed. So, so that commitment remains steady and remains level for you. So, so I would say in general, the 2019, as I think Mr. Bowling alluded to, really, one of the, pretty much the hallmark of that is that I think it reflects the staff's continued commitment to the same level, I think is a fairly aggressive level, both of all our priority, infrastructure programs, but specifically streets and sidewalks. I think you'll see that that has been maintained at the same level. So hopefully that is coincides with council's expectations on that priority for the community. You will see that we have in the new administration building, the planning for the design of 600,000, but that amount is really kind of a net zero impact on the fund balance itself because of the fact that we have reserved the proceeds from the previous administration facilities. So we're going to use that to actually fund whatever that expense actually is for us. So, and we do have a little bit extra that we're going over, the, the charter requirement. And I, I would like to talk about that for just a second because, you know, the, the charter requirement, for those of you, just to refresh you that, you know, that, that is what we're obligated to fund each year at a minimum in the capital fund. But some years we, we hit it, some years we underspend it for whatever reason, because the projects weren't completed for various reasons. But it does, over time, we've built up a reserve in the last few years in this fund. And so to go over the charter requirement, that's what it's there for, is a reserve. And we have some priorities that we feel are deserving of, of that additional expenditure in areas like our IT area and so forth, to get some very much-needed capabilities in place for 2019. So we, we do project a $350,000 overspend over the charter requirement. In actuality, that's a budget number. We typically outperform that in terms of what we actually put in to the capital fund. So in all likelihood, we'll be very close on that if we don't add to it this.
Ask questions?
Sure.
So, Mr. Coffey, would you suggest that, off the top of your head, would you say that even though we have a minimum of 25%, would you say over the last five years, and I'm going back to the comments that have been made around this table about the extra monies that we've tried to allocate and everything, would you say we're closer to 26%, 27%? Could you, can you get a...
In our actual expenditures?
Yeah, yeah, in terms of a percentage. Because that 25 is just a minimum, correct?
It is a minimum, correct. And it's so difficult to, to put that in terms of a, of an average, because by its very nature, these capital projects are very volatile in terms of what we actually expend in any given year. That's why we had a million, over a million dollars that was re-appropriated from 2017 for, for this year. So, so the average is really difficult to, I mean, you could technically do an average, but what does it mean? So...
See, I think that's a good story, though, for our community, a good, you know, to put that out there, that, you know, even though the charter is calling for 25%, that because of due diligence on the part of everyone that's sitting in this room, we're able to expend more than that 25%.
We have, we have. I think there's no question about that over, over time, absolutely. So, and, you know, I would also talk about, well, 2020 is one, one that deserves special note in that, because one of the things that you'll note in the plan for 2020, which is page one of three for 2020, we have in there a line item for the new administration building. It's really kind of a placeholder at this point in time, simply because we don't really have the actual numbers, but we're projecting at this time 5.7 million for that project. And at the same time, if you look at the funding on that, we're showing 1.5 million in funding for that. That's simply the residual that we're projecting for the proceeds. So we know that, you know, that's, that obviously leaves a fairly good-sized gap, but once we go through the, finish the process of scoping out with the architect and all, what this project is actually going to look like, and that we can get down to some detailed cost estimates, this is all kind of in the theoretical realm at this point that we've got to work with. So what this has for 2020 in particular, and that translates back to the spreadsheets in the back where we should project fund balance, you're going to see in 2020 that the fund balance is going to take a serious nosedive, all right? But that is because we don't have anything in there for debt related to that project, okay? And we're leaving that as an open item at this point, because we know that there's various opinions about how much debt the city should incur for that project and what the, what the expense of this project should be. And so we're, we're just putting in placeholders, if you will, at this point in time for that. So, but it's important to point out what happens and the effect of it when we look at our fund balance projections, because clearly, you know, we've got a 4, 4.2 million dollar gap there. It, it pops out at least, I think, to the...
So, so would you say that would, that's why we can't have an average, because that would skew our average?
Well, it would, yeah, yeah. The very nature of capital projects, you know? Volatile, year to year, it's just, it's just how, it's just how this works. So, so there's not a lot more that I thought was particularly, that I had that was particularly noteworthy in terms of the general government capital expense plans. But certainly, like I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Jim, or whoever else may need to address it. But I think that it's, I think it's a very prudent plan that we've put together. And again, it's, I think every department has participated, from fire to police to the utility areas and so forth, to try to only ask for what they really believe that they need. And, and they've been pretty good. I've maybe helped them a little bit with that, but, you know, generally speaking. Speaking of utilities, however, and that's the other, that's the other component in this, this plan, we refer to them collectively as the enterprise funds, which are our water, sewer and stormwater that we have in this. When you look at those fund balance sheets in the back, you will see that we're having some difficulties when it comes to the water fund in particular. And this is where our single biggest challenge is at this point in time, is with the water fund itself. It's a high level of demand for capital projects with that fund. But we're, we're struggling with the reality that, for instance, even though we had a 9% rate increase for 2018, right now it's looking like our revenue is actually only increasing about 4.4%. In 2017, we had an 8% rate increase, and our revenue only increased 3.4%. And in 2016, we had a 3% rate increase, and our revenue increased 1.9%. And the explanation for that fundamentally is that what we're seeing happen is that our billable consumption is on a steady decline. And that's due to a variety of reasons, but primarily all this energy efficiency and water efficiency and so forth that people are using. They're just concerned, the conservation measures are paying off. But the problem for us being that it also impacts our revenue. So even though we do the rate increases, the rev, the actual revenue realized in any given year is, is at a decreasing rate. So this is problematic as we project out long-term as to how we're going to do this. And so we know that rate increases alone are not going to solve this. I mean, I did some what-ifs, you know? I mean, we're, I did some totally unacceptable rate increase projections, and frankly, even that's not adequate to fund going far, all the way out. So what we've, what we've done collectively is, and what we are currently still doing, is a multifaceted approach to trying to work smarter, if you will, with how we manage our capital plans and how we manage this utility in particular. And again, Mr. Bowling and company have, have looked at things that if, so if billable consumption is trailing off, what does that mean? For instance, we've had on, we've had on the plan for a number of years to, to paint some of the water tanks. Okay. Well, it may be that we don't need all of the water tanks that we have, if we can reduce this. And there's other issues that Mr. Bowling can go into great detail, but don't.
Okay.
But...
Yes, he will.
But as to the benefits potentially of not utilizing all of our water tanks, okay, that's actually turns over the water volume more frequently, that's actually means that you don't have your chlore dissipate and so forth, you actually have a better quality product, you know, out of your faucet, okay, for instance. It may mean that we can, we can consider things like slowing up the rate of well-field development, okay? Not, that doesn't mean we won't do any well-field development, don't get me wrong on that, but maybe we're not quite as aggressive with how we pursue that, okay? And we cut back on some of that expense. Data is important, and, and we're, we're trying to find new ways to, to, to develop more reliable, more meaningful data. And one, one thing we are pursuing right now is to enhance our reporting capability out of the utility billing system itself, and at the same time, train staff better to use that enhanced reporting capability so that we can better get, manage the, the data that comes out of that. We could look at our exceptions better, we could try to identify where there are weak spots. We, every so often trip across somebody who, for whatever reason, may not have had a sewer charge on their, on their account when they shouldn't, when they've utilized sewers. We've come across instances where even new meters have been installed in, in a, in a new development, and lo and behold, the, the meter was faulty, and we, you don't realize it necessarily right off. And so you look for exceptions, things that are, don't fit right. So we're trying to work smarter in these, in, in these ways, through the better data mining of information and analysis of that information. So, so these are some of the things we're looking at. The bottom line is, at this point in time, staff is requesting a 3% rate increase for water and for sewer, both, in the coming year to maintain that, try to maintain as much as we can, the, to reserve balances in the funds that we need. Sewer appears to be in reasonably good shape, although there, again, there's trade-offs because of the fact that, like Jim said, we had some repairs and so forth that were unanticipated. And this, that's what you run into with an aging infrastructure, is that you always run up against the unanticipated. And that's why we want to be very protective, if you will, of maintaining our reserves at a prudent level so that we can, so that we can absorb those if and when they occur. So this is, this is why we believe that, in case even though sewer is currently projecting out positive in their fund balances, we want to maintain that reserve for that fund for those reasons. So...
Further questions? John?
Hey, you know, David, it just, it appears like, you know, every time we raise the water rates, we're punishing people because they're conserving. You know, so psychologically, it's really a messed up thing. We've added new equipment to the water plant because the energy grants that we had, which we didn't have to pay for, we're saving thousands of dollars on utilities. We walked by a chance to sell water to Rootstown because we didn't want to make somebody mad in Ravenna. And so, you know, where, where's the big expense going out? I mean, we're not, we're not recuperating the, the income.
Well, and again, I, I would refer you back to, to the, to the spreadsheet there by the fund. And one of the things I would point out to you is that if you look at the, in the middle of that spreadsheet is a, is a yellow line, okay? And that yellow line is actually our net operating position, okay? And without fail, you'll see that the net operating position is consistently a positive, healthy number, meaning that our revenue, less than our operating expenses, is yielding a consistently healthy, positive number for, for that fund. Okay, that's, that's true of water, sewer, stormwater, okay, across the board. So what's the tiebreaker? The tiebreaker are these capital projects that we have to do to keep reinvesting in an aging infrastructure, okay? That we have to have capital projects to keep the delivery systems functional.
So, so it's the capital projects. I mean, at what point do we get even with that? You know, it's...
I mean, if I can, John, I mean, we didn't want to get into all that tonight, but that, we wanted to raise the red flag. Fundamentally, it's going to require some hard decision, I think is what Jim said, at some point soon, because you cannot rate your way out of this problem. This is a, when you're trending and your consumption is such a dramatic downward trend, you have a plant that's six point, whatever, million gallons a day plant that's running at 2 million gallons a day. So you're carrying all those extra costs to still produce, and it's being billed to fewer and fewer people. So fewer and fewer people, I mean...
Maybe, maybe we need to find some other people that need our water now.
Well, we're bound, we're restricted.
Those are all valid, yeah, that's a valid issue.
Yes.
Certainly, we would love to have a Kimberly Clark or somebody like that come into town that, you know, uses just volumes and volumes of water consumption, I mean, in their production. I mean, that would be great. Anything of that nature would be, you know, a benefit so that we can utilize the excess capacity that we have at present. But...
So we'll keep optimizing. I mean, the thing I want to keep in your head is, a lot of the things that he talked about, the technology and so forth, we're optimizing, right? But it's still optimizing a failing system. We're just buying ourselves a little time. The more important thing is either finding a way, which there's a whole bunch of hurdles to what you're suggesting, we're bound by agreements, we can't spread here, we can't spread our system there. spread our system there, so we are sort of waterlocked. The key will be, what opportunities do we have to right-size? And that's Jim's phrase. I mean, it's, whether that's, can tanks be taken off? Can this six-plus-million-gallons-a-day carrying cost be reduced to half that? And if we could do that, that frees up a bunch of cash. Those are some really challenging, not simple answers to come up with tonight, and as Jim, I think, said, it's a decades conversation, because it could lead to the kind of things that other places have done. Akron has a water line running through Kent. We talked about it earlier, there's a bike trail that we're going to put right on top of it. Why, is there a day where it makes more sense? And I'm not saying that we know the answer to that, but that is one of those things that you could at least have a conversation at some point. Do you keep carrying this kind of cost, or at some point do you find ways to work deals with other jurisdictions? I mean, those are really, as Jim said, hard decisions, but it's a flag right now, it's a yellow flag, it's a decades conversation.
There's another unknown component here, which is, you know, we've talked about the continuous downward trend of billable consumption. I don't know the answer to whether or not that will eventually plateau out, perhaps where we've reached a kind of an optimal level, and it may, you know, normalize itself again. This is one of the difficulties in projecting our revenue reliably, is we don't know at what point does a community, has the community reached kind of a maximum efficiency level and is going to be plateauing out somewhat, where we can then actually realize more revenue from our rate increases, or more net revenue, I should say, but, you know.
Well, right now, wireless urinals are becoming very popular, and the one-gallon toilets are about as low as you can get unless somebody comes up with a waterless toilet, then we're in trouble.
Believe me, Ken is not the only one facing this dilemma. This is a widespread challenge, I think, to all utility providers.
Further, John? No.
Yeah. We had made some hard decisions a couple of years ago with Gene on setting increase rates. How many years did we project for that? I know you aren't here, but do you know how many years we projected for that and where we're at?
Well, we're currently on a level 3% annual projection.
So we're out of the--
Yeah, we had those initial high ones. I mean, we had, in terms of water, we had 2013 was 9%, 2014 was 4%. We backed off in 2015 and 2016, backed down to 3%. And then, as I mentioned, 2017 was 8%. 2017 was 8%, 2018 was 9%.
It's probably easiest to follow, even on, do you have this one on yours?
Yeah, that's what I'm showing her.
It should be a loose piece of paper. It shows the rate plan.
She didn't get one.
Oh, it's right here.
She didn't get it.
Sorry.
No, I don't have any. I think Hurston took one.
You don't have one either? All right, we'll redistribute that.
Okay.
I have some copies. Did Harrison? I guess he's not here.
Correct, 3%.
It was included in the mail.
Is it this one?
Yeah, I do have it. I lied.
Tracy, that'll give you a little bit of history of the plan.
Okay, so that's when we did it, 2015.
So you don't have any more questions? Okay, Robin.
Yeah, the reason, I think, at one time, we started kind of fractionalizing the impact when we took those votes, and, you know, we saw, we're going to see an inclin-- I mean, yeah, incline in what's going on. Are we going to be Cleveland and have to actually go out and do one of those massive, you know, almost cataclysmic increases in people's rates? Because you're talking about, first off, investing, those are things I think we kind of discussed before, how do we market? Kent Water is the best water I know about. I mean, you know, there's a place down here who's selling water. How to commercialize a real asset to the city, and that's still not going to really hit the, I guess, hit the target, because that's what we didn't want to do.
Right.
Become Cleveland.
Understood.
And I thought that's where we kind of built our strategy out.
Right.
When Gene was here. And now, all of a sudden, we're still looking at, and we knew that all along, though. That was not something that we, I think, as a body, did not know, that sometime the bill would come due. And it's come and do a little quicker than, than I don't know, than I had just--
Yes and no. I mean, I don't want to push any panic buttons at this point in time. All I can do is reassure you that, you know, that city staff is working collectively to try to think outside the box as much as we can on this, problem solve. And this is where I believe that, you know, I think the information, good data on which to make decisions and go forward on is critical, and this is what we've recognized and identified as something that we need to improve in, is the information that we have and the analysis that we do for that data. So that, and again, it's like thinking outside the box with, gee, maybe we don't need all the water tanks we've got, maybe we don't need other well field development, maybe there's things we can do to right-size this system to alleviate this. Now, I may not, you know, I may not forestall that indefinitely, but it certainly will buy us some time to figure out the next step.
Do we have the tools to do it? That's probably my big, we're talking about some issues, I look at the margins. There's still a big come-do time, and that's what we were banking on trying to address
I understand.
By having that. Not that it's your fault, but--
No, and I can assure you that staff is very sensitive to this issue of rate increases. You know, we look at rate increases not just from the terms of the citizen's standpoint, which is obviously what we're here for, but we look at it from a standpoint of competitiveness. We want Kent to be not known as the high utility community where businesses don't want to relocate here and all that. We want to be on the lower end of this, if we can, compared to our peers.
I just want to add something.
Here we go.
Sorry, I won't take long. No, Robin, your point, your question's a good one. Okay, and let me give an example that may help clarify. We have 100 miles of water line. Ideally, we would like to be replacing 1% of that a year. That's a mile, okay? However, we don't have the funds to do that. Instead of just going forward and doing it, we are looking at how many water main breaks we're having per year and tracking that over time. Because if the breaks aren't increasing, then maybe we can wait a little bit and replace a half a mile a year, or something a little less. And then, as we see things change, then we ramp up our response so that we don't become the concern of it being a massive rate increase like Cleveland and other places. So that's, I think, what he's trying to get at, is looking at all facets of how the infrastructure's performing, and before we just make a change to make a change, let's make sure it's failing now and then make that change. Does that help?
Yeah.
Further questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Back to council?
Nope, there's a question.
Oh, no. Mary, you have to come to the microphone.
Mary Canely, 1123 Elmo. We know that the water plant is approximately 50 years old. Is it in good shape and not needing any--
Yes, I think we can confidently say that. It's been well-maintained. The city has continued the necessary reinvestment in that plant facility. We're mindful of what you're saying, the age of it, but at the same time, it's been retrofitted a number of times in terms of its efficiency in motors and computer systems and management, and so that it's working at, how do I put it, industry standard efficiency level, I think would be one way to characterize it, yeah.
Further questions?
You don't need to, we have to act on this.
I'll move to accept the plan as presented.
A second, Pat.
Discussion? I just, I'd like to note that this is an interesting and unique situation. Kent is the environmental conscious community and has been a leader in environmental consciousness. And I think that sometimes, and I think we're finding this out with recycling, and we're certainly finding this out with water, that at some point, there is an equilibrium between the cost and our commitment to the environment. And that's a tough conversation, because we certainly don't want to increase water, the cost of water, but we certainly admire the fact that our community has become very conscious about protecting that asset. And I think we had those conversations years ago with fracking, that water is critical to our community. So it's a tough situation, but I think there's a way to get a balance there. I think we can get to that. It's just going to take some real hard work, and as what did Jim say, you can't keep rate increasing to get out of this, that we're going to have to have some real tough conversations.
John?
Just a question on this. By approving this capital plan as is, we're not approving any rate increases this time, are we?
3%.
Well, we are proposing a rate increase that coincides with this capital plan. So in other words, if we didn't, the rate increase will be presented to you at a point following this. If council chooses not to do the rate increase, then this capital plan will have to be revised because the funding has to be reevaluated, and the projects need to be reevaluated related to that.
And then, what time period would that be that you'd be asking for a rate increase?
We have traditionally done this for the early billing period in the following year. So in other words, we typically would look at a February, hopefully no later than March, effective date for the increase.
Further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Now you're going to your--
I have one more item of business, if I can. I would like to request committee authorization for appropriation amendments, as I've outlined in my October 30 memorandum to the city manager. There are three items on that request.
Any questions? Anybody in the audience? Back to council?
Move to approve.
Second.
With emergency.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's all for finance committee, too.
Okay, I'll open health and safety, review of the city regulations regarding leaves being raked into public right-of-way.
Yes, I think we've heard a couple of times about this issue has come up, and certainly from a fire safety perspective, we've always sort of taken the approach of, hey, it's rake your leaves to the edge of the street, not into the curb lane. But as has been pointed out, it's not always adhered to, and as Hope dug into it, she's recommending a language change to make that a little clearer and a little more enforceable in those incidents where maybe it's a little bit problematic, so.
Thank you.
And we also don't want those leaves in our sewer system either. I looked around at several other ordinances, and what I really did was I came back to our snow ordinance that prohibits snow to be shoveled into the street, and that's where you see that this ordinance comes from. It is not going to be considered a crime, it is going to be considered a public nuisance, and Bridget's guys over in her department will pursue this as a civil offense, as they do the snow. I also talked to Bridget about the fact that, you know, we suck leaves up as well, and I said, you know, someone has a property with huge, huge trees and lots of leaves. I said, you guys aren't going to be going out there and just when, just because some leaves go into the street, you're going to stop. And she said, no, her guys are reasonable, and that won't be happening in this situation.
Any questions from council? Anybody from the audience? Mary?
Mary Canely, 1123 Elmo. Oh, sorry. I guess sweeping is kind of a, how many people sweep? How many people sweep snow? Or put it in the streets, one. The snowfall comes through and takes them. They don't come through with the sucker-upper machines unless they're in your area. I know that there's a truck in each one of the areas, there was one in mine today, which came around and put up our, the people who come early to rig their leaves. There was also a truck out in the area, there was a pile of leaves at a car parked behind the pile where the sucker-up machine couldn't come and get it, which is under ordinance, I'm sorry, 35702, which the city doesn't have to put up signs at the time to pick up the leaves. All those ordinances that I gave you had punishable offenses, whether it be a minor misdemeanor and/or go from a minor up to a fourth degree. It's something that happens all over the city. If you just make the change, that the service department will basically not do anything, you're not going to solve the problem of blocking the sewers or blocking a lane of traffic for the citizens of the city.
This is not what this is about. This is not keeping where you park your cars. This just has to do with someone physically deciding that they are going to sweep or deposit leaves in the street.
And I gave you some, probably 25 or 30 ordinances.
You did not give those to me.
Okay, they were put online for everybody to see. I asked Tara.
Okay, I did not see them.
They were the packets that Gwen had given out, and then they were given afterwards. They were all scanned and emailed to everybody.
And gutters, I think you need to define gutters.
It says, it says gutters, gutter, street, or other public place. I think that's pretty broad.
People don't know what gutters are. If you don't have a sidewalk, you don't have a gutter, where the water runs through.
Correct, but you do have a--
The street.
But you have a street. It says street or public right-of-way.
I just think you're not solving the problem by putting it in this type of a situation.
Back to council. Anybody else in the audience? I'm sorry. Back to council, Tracy?
So if a person puts their leaves in the streets, then what is the city going, what is the city's response? No, I'm asking what it's going to be.
Point of order, please. No comments from the audience. Bridget, can you answer that question?
As you remember, we updated our civil offense code to basically, once code enforcement was established, having a, issuing a civil offense allows them to do the warning, and we issue a fine. We have found them to be definitely much more enforceable, and it also allows, when you do have a criminal charge, there are certain parameters and issues that come with it that doesn't remedy the situation in a timely manner. With our civil offense code, they can issue the warning, they got 10 days to fix it. If they don't, they're charged $100 fine. If then additional time goes by, another 10, and it's still not taken care of, that goes up again to 200. We have some fines that are actually outstanding for up to 1,500. Now, you might say that they're not going to fix the situation, but every year, we certify those costs over onto the property. And we get calls from property owners that are like, why did I get this $300 charge on my taxes? Because, well, you left the garbage out, or whatever the civil citation was issued for, and then they have to pay it immediately when that tax duty comes. We have found this financial punitive-- We have found this financial punitive action to be much more effective in realms that deal with snow, code enforcement, basically non-criminal-type activities.
So they will, so they'll be charged a fine?
Yes, they will be.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Roger. So Bridget, they're given 10 days. I mean...
They get a warrant to fix it.
To fix it?
Yes.
And then they have 10 days to fix it?
Basically, they'll get the warning. Typically, our civil enforcement, our code enforcement officers will go to the door if they are not... They have hang tags, actually, that deal with snow and cutting of the grass, which we will then be adding this to it if it was authorized by council tonight. It is checked off. They're notified what ordinance they're in violation of, and that this is a civil warning. And if it is not addressed within 10 days, it becomes basically a civil infraction, and then it's a $100 fine. That is then followed up with a letter. The staff goes back out.
So they stop you there. So if, in the case of leaves willfully put into this right-of-way, into the street, if you're giving them 10 days to fix it, that's 10 days that you've got a safety issue that isn't being addressed necessarily. And so wouldn't it be better to immediately have an immediate action for something like that, that whether it be snow or leaves, that's a safety issue for the street and anybody driving on the street? Because in that 10 days, a snowplow could come by and blow this, move the snow, or the leaf service could come by and do the job for them. And so they've never really been reprimanded for doing something wrong.
Well, we have, I can tell you, we've only had a couple of calls on the nature of this complaint. But the one thing that you have to remember is, if you're looking for code enforcement, if you make it a criminal action, it's actually going to take us longer to get the matter addressed, and it still will not be corrected in the street. Most people do not even realize that they have a civil infraction until they're talked to by Paul or Eric, and they see the tag. And most, I would say, majority comply. We do have a few that don't, and those are the ones that incur those fines. But if you make it a criminal offense, you're actually adding a layer of complication to it in enforcement. People think that that is really a big stick. It actually, financially, we have found for what I would call nonviolent, non-life-threatening matters, is actually hitting them in their pocketbook is much more effective.
Well, I, so maybe you could explain to me that, because I don't understand. What's the difference? Why can't a civil offense be immediately remediated? Because it sounds like you're saying it has to be...
You have to give due process. You do have to give time. We are America. Yeah, so there is a... And we also actually have an appeals process. We have actually issued civil infractions or warnings. Then they were not addressed for 10 days. Actually, a pod. We have a pod situation. They did not get it permitted.
Over in University Heights?
No, it is not, actually. It's one of only the other two pods, and it's not that one. But he didn't get the permit, which is free. So then it became a fine. He still chose to not address it. The fine went up 10 days later. He asked for an appeals hearing. We do give due process, and that 10-day period, as well as the appeals hearing, was part of that process. He, he was not found in his favor to get that, and he still is in compliance. And his fine is now up to $1,500. Now, he is ignoring our letters, which is fine, but it will be certified over, as we do every August, to the county auditor. So when he gets that tax duplicate in February of 2020, it will be due and payable then, the whole 1,500, along with his taxes.
We did run it by Chief Lee as well, as far as an option. And she kind of reiterated the same frustrations that we had with all the other kind of code enforcement issues. Many times, it's a higher standard when you're trying to prove a criminal violation. And that higher standard leads to conversations like, well, the officer needs to see the person physically raking it into the street. He can't just say, yeah, there's a pile there.
I'm not asking to make it a criminal versus civil. I was just saying, what's the situation?
Can it be assured? Right.
One of the things, too, that we use in our department a lot is, you know, we have to hit a bar of reasonable doubt for certain things in our zoning code. But preponderance of evidence is actually a lot easier, and that is really what a civil enforcement action is. So what we can do with the leaves, for example, if it was criminal, as Dave said, you'd have to see them raking them in the leaves. Basically, definitely doing this overt act. But with the way, as a civil offense, if it's in front of their yard and we see it, we can go put the hang tag. That is in violation. Now, they might say, hey, that's not my... It's in front of your property, however. We don't have to see him rake it. We just have to know that it's in front of his property, and the way this ordinance is written, it can be enforced, and then we can get the corrective action. With criminal, if we can't say who did it, it's just like a break-in. If you can't identify who did it, you are not going to be able to actually figure it out and enforce that act.
Thanks.
I'm not a lawyer. She could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think civil enforcement...
She's my assistant.
Further from council? Okay.
Thank you.
Moved to authorize? With emergency?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And one last thing on health and safety, and that's approving the city KSU lighting agreement. Yeah, Jim has been working with the staff related to improving pedestrian-level lighting, particularly where the esplanade crosses Lincoln. I probably could use it at Willow, too, but I think for right now, we're talking about Lincoln. Both? I'm sorry. Okay. So there's, you may have noticed, there's been a couple, not a lot, but there's been a couple of hits in those locations. So it's, again, to try to improve visibility at night. Came up with this idea, well, let's partner and add more lighting. Fairly simple solution that, again, kind of in the spirit of collaboration and partnership, so. Do you want to add to that, Jim?
The only thing I would add is, we investigated with the university in what's the most cost-effective way to do it. And we came up, the most cost-effective way we would do it would be to extend their lighting circuit beyond their maintenance dollars, have their requirements to take care of it, but it would like the crosswalks.
Questions? Tracy?
Have the hits occurred on Lincoln, on Willow, or on both?
Lincoln.
Because I know before, in Willow, when the esplanade went there, we had talked about putting up stop signs, and you had said that the research doesn't support that stop signs are needed. And we can't put them up on Lincoln, because then it would be too short of a move from one stop sign to the other to the main.
Correct. We haven't looked into putting up stop signs on Lincoln, but I would expect that it would be similar. And yes, if we have a stop sign that close, we'd start causing backups.
You already got backups.
People stop anyway at the crosswalk.
Further questions from council? The audience? Any questions? Back to council?
Moved to approve. Second. Emergency? We need emergency?
Yes. We seconded. Roger. Okay. Comments?
Safety first.
Safety first. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mike, is there any for an executive session? No? Okay. All right.
We need to read in...